Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the School Board of Seminole County School Board meeting for August 16th, 2016. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Allman for our invocation and pledge. Please.
Good evening. Welcome back to all our teachers, faculty, staff, students, and parents. I'd like to read something called "God Created the Teacher" from inspire.com, and the author is unknown. "On the sixth day God created men and women, on the seventh day He rested, not so much to recuperate, but rather to prepare Himself for the work He was going to do the next day; for it was on that day, the eighth day, that God created the first teacher. This teacher, though taken from among men and women, had several significant modifications. In general, God made the teacher more durable than other men and women. The teacher was made to arise at a very early hour and to go to bed no earlier than 11:00 PM with no rest in between. The teacher had to be able to withstand being locked up in an airtight classroom for six hours with thirty-five monsters on a rainy Monday. The teacher had to be fit to correct one hundred and three papers over Easter vacation? Yes, God made the teacher tough, but gentle too. The teacher was equipped with soft hands to wipe away the tears of the neglected and the lonely student, those of the sixteen-year-old girl who had not yet been asked to prom. And into the teacher God poured a generous amount of patience, patience when a student asked to repeat the directions that the teacher had just repeated for someone else, patience when the kids forget their lunch money for the fourth day in a row, patience when one-third of the class fails the test, patience when the textbooks haven't arrived yet and the semester starts tomorrow. And God gave the teacher a heart slightly bigger than the average human heart, for the teacher's heart had to be big enough to love the kid who screams 'I hate this class, it's boring,' and to love the kid who runs out of the classroom at the end of the period without so much as a goodbye or let alone a thank you. And lastly, God gave the teacher an abundant supply of hope, for God knew that the teacher would always be hoping, hoping that kids would someday learn how to spell, hoping not to have lunchroom duty, hoping that Friday would come, hoping for a free day, and hoping for deliverance. When God finished creating the teacher, He stepped back and admired the work of His hands, and God saw that the teacher was good, very good, and God smiled; for when He looked at the teacher, He sought into the future. He knew that the future is in the hands of the teacher, and because God loves teachers so much, on the ninth day God created Hurricane Days." Please stand for the pledge.
(laughter)
(intelligible)
Do the flag of the United States of America and due republic which stands one nation and God indivisible with liberty and justice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Allman. I loved that. Let the record reflect that all School Board members are in attendance. Mr. Bauer is attending telephonically. In addition, our School Board Attorney and Superintendent are present. I'd also like to introduce and say thank you to Mr. Steve Brown, representing our Business Advisory Board Committee. Thank you for being here this evening. Dr. Griffin, do you have any agenda modifications?
Just one, Madam Chair. The addendum for good cause is marked on electronic agenda by a green flag named addendum item.
Thank you. Board members, any items for removal or clarifying questions? Mrs. Allman.
No, ma'am.
Mrs. Schaffner.
Yes, 4J and 4K.
Thank you. Member Bauer?
Ma'am.
Thank you. Mrs. Lockhart?
I just have a comment on 4B as in boy.
And I don't have any questions at this time. I had all my answers received already. Is there a motion for approval of outline?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. Any questions or further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Griffin, do we have any presentations and recognition?
Yes, we do. Please join me up front.
Good evening. I'm Chief Jeff Chudnow from the Oviedo Police Department. We're here this evening partly to thank the School Board and Dr. Griffin for allowing us to run a program in Jackson Heights Middle School. We were awarded the Rocky Palmer Ants Award for Innovative Policing by the Florida Police Chiefs Association for 2015. Our program, as everybody can see, Officer Hanau and really the star is Bailey. She's at Jackson Heights every day. She does a fantastic job dealing with the students, especially the special needs students and the at-risk kids. It gives Officer Hanau wonderful chance to work that bond with those students, breaks down some barriers, and hopefully helps the students progress, not just through their day, but through the school year. But without the assistance and the support and trust of the School Board and Dr. Griffin, we wouldn't be there. So in winning this award, it's a lot goes to you all, so we appreciate it greatly.
Hello. Hi. Thank you. Hi, Dr. Griffin and the School Board of Seminole County. My name is Erica Ostie, and I am here as a member of the Coordinated School Health Partnership and Florida Action for Healthy Kids. And it's with great pleasure that I am awarding you guys the Bronze Level Florida Healthy School District Award. So the Coordinated School Health Partnership is a grassroots partnership whose members represent not-for-profits, professional associations, school nurses, educators, insurers, Florida PTA, and other advocates. The primary purpose of the Coordinated School Health Partnership is to inform advocacy for school health issues and recognize excellence amongst Florida school districts. The Florida Coordinated School Health Partnership, Florida Action for Healthy Kids, Florida Association of District School Superintendents, and Florida Healthy Kids Corporation applaud your district for establishing a culture and climate in which students and staff can truly reach their personal potential, and you continue to serve as a leader in the state in reducing and eliminating, excuse me, the barriers to learning resulting in increased academic achievement. That's pretty exciting. The School District of Seminole County is being recognized at the Bronze Level, and your highest scores were in the areas of health services and healthy school environment. So in regards to school health services, that really removes health-related barriers to attendance, performance, and academic success. A healthy school environment reflects the physical as well as the social climate of the district. This includes safety, personal interactions, and violence prevention. So the Florida Coordinated School Health Partnership and Florida Action for Healthy Kids look forward to continuing to support your efforts in the districts and promoting the forty-three other Florida healthy school districts, yours included, with resources, technical assistance, and advocacy efforts. So thank you guys for being the forefront runners here, ensuring the future of a healthy Florida by creating health-literate and health-practicing students and staff. And we would also like to give a special thanks to Debbie Cottle for her exceptional work on making this possible.
Dr. Griffin and School Board members, it is my pleasure tonight to honor two outstanding members of our high school family team. Our first recognition is our Bright House Seminole County Coach of the Year, among many other awards you'll hear in a minute, Coach Scott Wasson from Oviedo High School. Scott is AP Chemistry Teacher. He's been teaching for twenty years at Oviedo High School, nineteen years coaching soccer, and eleven of those years as a head coach. His overall record in eleven years as a head coach is 186, 54, and 20, six Final Four appearances, three state championships in 2011, 2013, and of course, this past year in 2016, two state runner-up championships in 2008 and 2015. For this past season, the team was 21-2 and ranked number two nationally by MaxPreps. His awards for the year, and listen to this, it's pretty amazing, includes the 2015-2016 Seminole Athletic Conference Coach of the Year, the 2016 Florida Dairy Farmers 5A Coach of the Year, and then he won the overall Coach of the Year for the entire state in all classifications. This summer, he was named National Soccer Coaches Association of America Large School Coach of the Year for the State of Florida, and is in the pool of voting for the Southeast Regional Coach of the Year for that same organization, Scott Wasson. And with him tonight is Principal Joe Tribus, and some other members of the Oviedo High School Admin, Faculty, and Staff. Our next honoree, who was named Bright House Seminole County Athletic Director of the Year, none other than Jerry Kelly of Lake Brantley High School. Jerry started teaching math and coaching volleyball, basketball, tennis, and softball in 1979. She entered athletic administration in 2000 and became the first certified athletic administrator in Seminole County in 2010. Currently, she's the President of the Florida Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association, that is a mouthful, a member of the Florida High School Activities Association Representative Assembly, and the Chairperson of the Athletic Directors Advisory Council for Athletic Directors in the State of Florida. In the meeting tonight is her husband, Jerry Kelly, and she wants to note that without Jeff's support throughout her career, none of this would have been possible. They've raised three amazing young adults that have all graduated from Lake Brantley High School and earned college degrees while playing college sports and are off the payroll. That's why she's smiling right there and enjoying their careers as a CPA, sales consultant, and assistant golf professional. With her tonight also, Dr. Trent Daniel, Principal, other members of the Lake Brantley Admin Team and Faculty and Staff.
Board members and Superintendent, please join me in welcoming Jody Farbstein, the new Assistant Principal at English Estates Elementary. Jody is a three-time graduate of University of Central Florida. She holds a Bachelor's Degree in Elementary Education, a Master's Degree in Educational Leadership, and higher ed education, and a Specialist Degree in Educational Leadership. She's been with Seminole County Public Schools for eleven years, where she served as a first, second, fourth, and fifth grade teacher, also served as a science instructional coach and school manager at English Estates. She's beyond excited to be joining the administrative team at English Estates. Jody's family is not able to be here tonight. They are all living, they all live in Murphy, North South Carolina, but her principal, Shannon Aikerson, is here with her tonight.
Good evening, Board members. I'd like to ask Tracy Gustafson to come up. She is our newest Assistant Principal at Sable Point Elementary School.[981.04][981.04](applause) I think she brought her fan club. Tracy completed her undergraduate coursework at UCF and has been teaching for twenty years. Most recently, she was an instructional coach at Geneva Elementary School. She's taught in a variety of positions, including teaching and coaching. As a recent graduate of Stetson University's Educational Leadership Program, she is very excited to begin her career in administration at Sable Point Elementary School. With her tonight, her husband Jason, and children Cole and Kaylee. If you all would stand up and be recognized. Also, I see her principal, Dr. Langdon, and some of her posse from Geneva Elementary Also tonight, another new Assistant Principal at Altamont Elementary School, Joanne DePlantis. Jo received her Bachelor of Arts in Social Work from Valparaiso University in Indiana. She then continued her education at Lamar University in Beaumont, Texas, picking up sixty hours in elementary education and reading. Jo earned her Master's in Educational Leadership from Eastern Michigan University. Jo previously worked for SCPS as a middle school literacy coach and as coordinator of secondary literacy. She also was an elementary school teacher and curriculum leader. Her husband Mark can't be here with her tonight, and she also asked me to let you know that she had car ramp duty in the rain today and didn't have a chance to go home.[1086.41][1086.41](laughter) So, congratulations, Jo.[1091.08][1091.08](applause) And last, but certainly not least, tonight for Assistant Principal, Shonda Granger, our newest Assistant Principal at Carollan Elementary School. Shonda has worked in education for fifteen years at the secondary and elementary levels. She has served in positions from math teacher to instructional coach. In 2011, Shonda was awarded the Polk County and Regional Prism Award for Math. Shonda is passionate about making a difference every day with the students and staff that she serves. Her husband, LaRome, and son, Jaren, were not able to be here tonight, but her new principal, Dr. Windish, is with her here tonight.
Good evening, Dr. Griffin and School Board members. It is with great pleasure that I introduce our new facilitator in the ESO World Languages Department. I would like to introduce Michelle Ola. Michelle, come on up, please. Michelle received her BA from the University of Minnesota on teaching Spanish K through twelve in 2003, her Master's Degree in Educational Leadership from Stetson University in 2015. Michelle has taught Spanish at Teague Middle School for seven years, and three years at Seminole County Virtual School, and recently as a world language curriculum specialist in the ESO World Languages Department for three years. Family members in attendance tonight is her husband, Steve Ola, her son, Gabe Ola, and her father, Ed Montgomery. Could you all please stand to be recognized tonight, too, family members, and congratulations
They always miss the best part of the meeting. But I don't know, we had a dog earlier today. That might have been the best. Mr. Brown, we'll just have you bring your dogs from now on when you come. Mrs. Schaffner, you had some comments or questions on 4J and K?
Yes, on J. Could I ask Dr. Cody to please come up and explain what this is all about, the Edgisor Corporation? Excuse me.
Yes, ma'am. Edgisor is the corporation that Kathy Ora Paulo has established, and Dr. Ora Paulo provides services to our district for professional development. And in particular, she works with our K-12 Literacy Framework. She does onsite support for schools in need of additional assistance. She provides resources, texts, and guidance related to progress monitors, supports collaborative planning. She also provides principal and administrator training during superintendent seminars, and she works with teachers to analyze student writing samples to provide next steps for improvement. Over the last two years, Dr. Ora Paulo has established professional learning networks where our teachers work collaboratively on their implementation of the literacy frameworks. And she has served, in 2014, 15, two-hundred-and-three teachers that have been through her training. And then she presented at Power of You during the first year of Power of You, and had two-hundred-and-thirty-five teachers go through her sessions. For 15, 16, she served three-hundred-and-thirty-four teachers in her Professional Learning Network program, and she had one-hundred Power of You participants this year. And I want to thank Mr. Guard Harold for providing all these statistics. And the reason for the one-hundred is we had limited to thirty per session, and there were a few extras that went, but that's what we asked her to provide. So she has served a total of four-hundred-and-eighty-nine unique participants, because some teachers went to more than one session. Power of You, unduplicated, was three-hundred-and-seven teachers. And as you know, the ELA standards are very complex, and teachers continue to, excuse me, to ask for support in ensuring that they're providing the rigor and the depth to help our students be successful. And obviously, the success of our students is in the hands of our teachers, and I would always say that first. But we also have an obligation to ensure that our teachers are provided with professional development. And I'm proud to say that out of all of the sixty-seven districts in the overall English Language Arts FSA performance, Seminole County ranked sixth, and that's, you know, a very important statistic. Not that Dr. Ora Paulo individually created that, but certainly she contributed to the work that our students are doing. And I think the other aspect of this conversation is related to teachers that we're empowering. Dr. Ora Paulo provides one aspect of our professional development, but I wanted to share with you that over, and I want to make sure I have the right numbers here, and this is due to the Board's direction, that we access the expertise of our teachers. And during the 15-16 school year, just not from all sources of extended contract, but from the Board's support via the millage, from our reading categorical and some of our other operating funds, we paid teachers about $414,000 for training other teachers. And then with the Power of You that we just concluded in July, we paid teachers another $113,000. So we're certainly aware of, appreciate, and access the expertise of our teachers, and simultaneously seek to provide them with expertise that Dr. Ora Paulo has that perhaps we don't have in our own district.
Thank you.
Ms. Schaffner, could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
It was interesting, one of the things that I read just in the write-up, which kind of struck me as odd, and it just might just be the way it was written, because I know sometimes we interchange Florida standards with Florida standards assessment, but obviously, Dr. Ora Paulo can't train our staff on the Florida standards assessment because none of us have seen it.
Yeah, or will we?
You're correct.
Right. So I think maybe, I just wanted to, because if someone else reading this out of context might not see that what we're really asking her to do is help to teach, instruct teaching the standards.
Correct.
Right?
Yes, understand.
And I know that says, might sound like a nitpicky technicality, but I think for all of the discussion that we've had about the FSA, you know, none of us have seen it. So I just thought that was worth pointing out.
Understand.
And why have none of us seen it?
Because it's a secret.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Schaffner, you had a question?
Because DOE will not permit anyone to see it.
I know. Okay. And the other comment, this is just a comment on what we do with UCF. Their social workers, I'm looking for it in a hurry here, the College of Education in Human Performance, they come into Hamilton and Midway Elementary School, and they bring interns with them, and I just, this has been going on for several years now, and it's just such a great service that they provide to our school. It's a school where we need more opportunities for social workers and counselors to be there, and so the resources they provide to our kids at Midway and Hamilton are incredible, and I just applaud UCF for partnering with us in this project.
Thank you. We'll share that with Dr. Lambie and his.
Please do.
Thank you. And Mrs. Lockhart, you had a question on 4B?
Well, I just honestly had a comment. On page sixteen, it was the synopsis of our work session with the Board of County Commissioners, and I wanted to thank our staff for continuing to follow up on making sure that we get everything together that needs to be done in order for us to specifically talk about the alternative impact fee process. I know both the Board of County Commissioners and the School Board were very specific that we wanted to follow up to happen quickly, because we know development is happening quickly, and so I appreciate the follow-up on this, and would ask you to continue to follow up as needed to make sure that everything gets done. Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Dr. Griffin, do you have a recommendation?
That the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in second. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. And upon approval of the consent agenda, I thought I'd recognize some friends in the audience this evening from the YMCA and say that we are very much looking forward to our partnership this year with Teague, Markham, and Tuscaloosa with the after-school program, and look forward to a lot of great academic, athletic, and scientific acceleration for all of our students. So thanks for coming out tonight, and thanks in advance for what we're going to be doing for our students this year.
And thank you for forwarding that budget to me. I appreciate it.
Great. Dr. Griffin, moving on, we have no student discipline, and so we're coming up to the part of public comment. If anybody would like to. If anybody would like to address the board, there are forms on the back sheet, back table. Please feel free to fill them out, bring them up to our clerk. I do have two at this time. Would like to recognize Abby Sanchez, representing Lake Brantley PTA and SAC. And then also would like to call Tammy Uliano? Okay, I was close. And Lisa Cost to the podium, please. Thank you.
Chairman Calderon?
Yes.
And we have a scout in the audience. I don't know if he's been recognized, and perhaps we should.
Good evening, sir. I'm sorry I didn't see you there. Would you like to stand up and introduce yourself? And what's your name? Welcome, Paul. Are you working on your Eagle Scout? Very good. Well, if we can help you any way, we are here to help serve. We always enjoy having Boy Scouts and Eagle Scouts come visit.
Which merit badge are you working on? Wonderful. Welcome. Welcome.
Good evening, ladies. If you could identify yourself for the record, and we'll give you three minutes to address the board.
Hi, Tammy Uliano. And we just wanted to say thank you and show our appreciation for your consideration of opening Longwood again. We were former teachers, so we loved that family atmosphere, and we were so happy that you're going to reopen it. I did have a question, though. On B, it says you're having a committee. We were wondering whether, who was on the committee and if former teachers could be represented on the committee.
I can respond to that. Yes, I believe a former teacher will be on the committee. The names have not been all released yet, because Mr. Ronaldo is working with the Longwood City Commission. I went and spoke to them, so we're kind of working together to form the committee, but I have a sneaking suspicion one of you is on the committee.
We were just checking. If it's the same committee. If it's the same committee, you're not, that's why we're unsure.
We are thrilled that it's opening back up, just for that community in Longwood. It was such a walk-to-school where parents would come and kids would come, so we are thrilled. We have three other members over there that wanted to wave but are too scared to get up. Thank you, no more of your time. Thank you so much.
I just want to reiterate again, you know, board, I think you made a great decision. We could have built a new school possibly for 26, 27 million if we could have found the property. And I think putting the eight million into Longwood, it's a great location, and the community is excited. So I think it was a really fiscally responsible thing to do, and it's going to help us with capacity, because as we're finding, the kids are still coming today.
And I have talked to several Longwood teachers there, and they have the same, expressed the same, they're very, very happy that we're reopening Longwood Elementary.
That's great. Dr. Griffin, do you have anything on your superintendent support you'd like to share?
Just two read-only items, a grants report, and one change order.
Okay. Moving on to board member committee updates and board member comments. Member Almond.
Okay. Well, Dr. Calderon and I had an opportunity to go to Florida Hospital way the heck out, Lake Underhill. We were invited to observe a class that was taking place, Orange County Public Schools students, and they were learning about diabetes and prevention over three days, and Florida Hospital is considering bringing it to Seminole County if it's successful. So we're very pleased about that. Superintendent's Leadership Conference, Sean Harold, awesome, awesome conference. We love the speaker, Sabrina Torres from Limitless. So very well done, and thank you Hagerty for hosting that. New teacher orientation, fabulous also. As far as any of the boards, the Business Advisory Board, we talked about Longwood Elementary, and Jean Miller volunteered to serve on the committee, and she has some experience that will lend to that committee, which will be great. And there was an overview of the foundation by Devia Moss. We talked a little bit about return on investment in e-pathways and internships, and quantifying the value of the internships for the students. Next month, we're going to Lake Hall High School to see the pool, so we're all excited about that. Children's cabinet meeting was for C, Community Coordinated Care for Children. And then Sunday night, Steinway Society had their big fundraiser, Divas and Devo's. DeeDee and I were both there, and we appreciate their support for our students and the pianos that they give to them. And opening school first day, first week has been fabulous. We've enjoyed visiting classrooms. I was really impressed in an elementary school. Brand-new teacher, I won't name the school, but on every student's desk was a note from the parents to the child. For example, "Dear Johnny, have a great first day in school. We love you so much. Love mommy and daddy." And the fact that that teacher went above and beyond to make that extra special little welcome, it was awesome. So that's my report.
Very nice. Member Schaffner?
And going along with first day of school, it was incredible. You could walk in an hour after school opened, you would have thought it was three months into the school year. It was just, there was so much going on. But peace and quiet everywhere. I mean, it was just amazing. Surprised at how many people had waited to enroll their children, maybe because we started on a Wednesday. I don't know if that threw people or what. I'm sure even the day after Labor Day, we'll have even more enroll. But our enrollment is off the charts unexpectedly, and so we are working, we're still hiring teachers, I'm understanding. Is that right, Boyd?
That's correct.
So that's, but first day has just been wonderful, and I like the fact, and a lot of teachers commented to me, the fact that they went for three days, got all the, you know, basics covered. Then on Monday, yesterday, they were off and running, no question about it. And I did go to Pinecrest on a Saturday, last Saturday. They had a wonderful opportunity for parents. They had all kinds of booths set up there with services that they can provide, but they've wanted parents to have a chance to see the different kinds of programs they have at Pinecrest. The turnout was incredible. It really was. I had fun. They had, there's a group that brings dogs into schools for reluctant readers, so they can read to the dog, and Charlie was the dog I was with. And we had two or three children that sat down and read to Charlie. It's very, it's very non-intimidating to read to a dog. You don't know if they're listening or not, but so you're not worried that they're going to correct you on what word is it you're reading? So that's a great program that they have, and we appreciate them doing that. We had our open discussion with our school board members, and that was always very productive as usual. And I'm going to let somebody else talk about the insurance meeting that we had today. But I just want to put on your calendars, November 12, Arts Alive. Put it on your calendar. We're already soliciting tables and have already got a number of them. We're going to be doing the tryouts in October, and the auditions in October, and they will be held at Seminole High School and at Winter Springs High School, so both ends of the county. But that's going to be exciting, so mark it on your calendar.
Great. Done. Member Bauer, do you have any comments?
No comments. I just want to thank everybody who's come to visit me and brought food. Lost about 30 pounds. Half of, half of my former self.
Was that a plea for us to come visit some more with some more food?
Oh, Karen, I could use some more cookies.
Okay.
Okay.
Duly noted. Vice Chairman Lockhart.
I don't know how you follow that.
Bake some cookies.
Yeah, I wish I. What kind, Jeff? What kind of cookies?
No, I'm not picky.
I bet not, especially now you're not.
Ditto on the leadership conference at Hagerty. It was very impressive to watch how things moved so smoothly for that event. I mean, not even, content was fabulous, but Sean, you did a fabulous job organizing that and getting everything together in a very seamless way. It was really commendable, so thank you. First day of school was always great. I appreciate so much Dr. Cody allowing me to tag along with her. It really is a treat to be able to welcome those students. We visit elementary schools, and just those darling little elementary school faces, so excited on that first day of school, and everybody was so happy. It was almost like a, teachers were happy, principals were happy, everybody was just, it was a neat day. So thank you again. Dr. Calderon and I attended the Zika roundtable that Congressman Micah hosted at the University of Florida IFAS Extension Office last week. Really want to thank Congressman Micah for taking the time to pull people together from all of the surrounding counties, not just elected officials, but the boots on the ground, the staff who make things work and know what works and what doesn't work. Tremendous amount of red tape that's being passed down from the state in particular in terms of spending the money that's been allocated to fight Zika. And so it's really important that we work so closely with our local folks to help how we can, particularly in communicating how, the personal responsibility aspect of making sure that these mosquitoes are not breeding. So hopefully, as a school district, we'll be able to help our local folks communicate to families and things that they can do to help with that. The insurance committee this afternoon was good.
Enlightening.
Enlightening. I won't go into too much detail. The minutes will be coming out, and we'll hit all the highlights, and we'll weed through all of the editorial comments that probably don't need to be in the minutes. Thank you. And it was, it was great for all of us to be able to talk about, and thank you, Mr. Brown, for being there as our Business Advisory Board member. It was good to be able to see some other perspectives about voluntary benefits and how we'll move forward with that in the future. And thank you so much to Lauren Haddick. Is she still here? She is our new benefits and risk.
Management director.
Management director that we recognized at our last board meeting, but today she really showed how valuable she is going to be a part of this team, so we really appreciate her. And then two things having to do with parent input that I just want to share. There was an email that went out recently, all of our high school principals, I believe, sent out regarding the e-pathways program and the fact that it's available to so many of our students and so many parents didn't know about it. And so I'm thrilled that it went out. But the perception on the part of many parents is still that e-pathways is a VOTEC program. And the comments that I'm getting feedback from parents is, well, you know, I don't know why you sent this to me. My kid's not in VOTEC. Okay, well, that's not what e-pathways is about. So anything that we can do, maybe in brainstorming how to better communicate all that e-pathways is and that it can be for students would be fantastic. And then also wanted to just mention the Skyward app. The mobile app went recently through an upgrade, and so it looks very different. And that probably wasn't fantastic timing to have happen a couple of days before school starting, just for future, probably not want to do that. But the mobile app for Tim, and he was awesome, and he is, his team were great because there's all kinds of stuff going on behind the scenes, and they pulled it together at the last minute. But the mobile app and the desktop version of Skyward are not the same. They don't offer the same items. So most parents access Skyward from the mobile app, and there's still so much on that desktop that they don't have access to. So if there's some way in your conversations with Skyward, or even if you want to just play this little clip for them of our meeting, letting them know that we really appreciate the upgrades, timing is key, and if there's any way that they can make sure that the mobile app and the desktop are similarly aligned, that would be awesome.
That they communicate, right?
They, the information is accurate in both, the gradebook is there in both places, but test scores are not on the mobile app, they're on the desktop app, and it's just sort of, it's just not the same. So, and the communication factor, I think, is an issue as well with Skyward when you're emailing through that app to teachers. So just a variety of things.
Well, thank you for sharing.
Sure.
And thanks, everybody, for making my list a lot shorter. I got to check a lot of things off. But one meeting I did have the opportunity to attend was the annual Chrome's Business Advisory Council meeting, and I'm really thrilled with how that school in particular has really reached out to our business community in the high tech, that they are so engaged in that school from raising scholarships to mentorships to advisement on classes and guest speakers and hosting TechFest, that I always love to interact with those business people that are giving of their time and their talent and their treasures to make sure that all of the students at Chrome's are getting a great education, as we know they are. I also sit on the American Cancer Society Board, as you know, and I just wanted to share with everyone, to mark your calendars, before you go to Arts Alive, you need to get in shape to wear that nice evening gown. So on October 29, at 9:00 a.m., the 15th Annual Making Strides and Best Cancer will be held in downtown Orlando. That's the largest walk in central Florida, and being the 15th Annual, it promises to be the largest ever. And we know many of our SCPS family members have fought this terrible disease, and any way we can support them, I think, would be beneficial. I, along with many of you, over the last few weeks, have attended a lot of back-to-school festivals and backpack programs. So just for the whole community, I have to say thank you, whether it be LaPrentza or those who donated at Pinecrest. But our community really comes together at times like this to make sure that all of our children have everything they need to have a successful school year, so it doesn't go unnoticed. Our children appreciate it, but we do as well. Loved the first day of school, but every school day since then, Dr. Griffin and I had the opportunity to visit every single high school on that first day. And as you saw in the Welcome Back video, there was teaching and learning two seconds after the first bell rang. And we promote and support our teachers, saying they teach to the standards and don't want to waste any instructional time. They don't. I even got an apology letter from a high school teacher that he didn't say hi to me because he said, "I only have three minutes left." He didn't want to introduce to the class or anything, that he was so impressed with teaching those students, and then wrote a two-page, two-paragraph apology email saying, "I'm sorry that I didn't have time to spend with you," but they shouldn't spend time with us, they're spending time with their students. And thank you to Headquarter Hyundai. I know Mrs. Schaffner and I went yesterday. They donated 14 engines to our automotive programs for our students to work on, and that really brings relevancy to the e-pathways program, but others as well. Today, I represented you all at the mayors and managers' meeting, and as you requested, I asked if the cities would like to have a joint work session with the school board and the cities, and they didn't feel at this point in time that was necessary. They felt we were communicating effectively, whether it be through Calno or mayors and managers or just regular emails, and I offered all of us, if at any time they needed us to come to a city commission meeting, we'd be happy to do so. And I also wanted to give a shout out. This year, the awards for Principal of the Year and Assistant Principal of the Year weren't announced at our leadership conference, so I just wanted to congratulate our Principal of the Year for Seminole County Public Schools is Dr. Mia Coleman Baker at South Seminole Middle School. And our Assistant Principal of the Year is Trina Greenon at Millennium Middle. So we're very proud and honored to have them as leaders in our district and love, love having them part of our Seminole County family. And I know, Mrs. Beeman, you had an item you wanted to bring before the board.
Thank you, Chairman. I am in need of advice regarding a matter that we were recently served with. The case is Rhea et al. versus Stewart et al. It is in the Leon County Circuit Court, 2016 CA 1794. And, over. I'm getting, okay. Is that better? No?
I'm requesting for Friday.
Yes.
This Friday.
What time?
Madam, could you find a time in all of our calendars? Please? You can cancel any of my meetings. I looked at mine. I can reschedule everything I have.
Nine works.
Uh-uh. No, for Mrs. Almond?
I can do nine.
Can we make it 9:30?
9:30?
I have a 10 o'clock.
You do?
I can, I'll just, I'll.
Go to nine, go back to nine. Yeah.
Mr. Bauer, is 9 o'clock all right with you?
Yeah, that's fine if I can attend by telephone.
Perfect. We'll arrange for that. Thank you, Mrs. Beeman. Anything else to come before the board? Seeing none, thanks for a great meeting, everyone. This meeting stands adjourned.